We're looking at a topic which was something we have looked at already a number of times with a number of different organisations. We've had discussions in Brussels, in London. We decided it would be important to have a hearing on this particular topic. I welcome all the organisations that are here with us today, all of our friends who took up this invitation, and those of us who are always here. In the task force meetings, we always talked about the most recent developments, so let me just update you. In discussions with the Chair when we organised this meeting, though unfortunately she can't be here with us today, but she is very much in agreement with what we're discussing. Looking at recent developments, we met on the 27th of February last. We had the General Secretary as a guest, Mr Tayani, the next day signed a cooperation agreement with the General Secretary. That's a new development, we haven't had anything like this in the past. Thanks to this agreement, we will be able to have much closer, more frequent contacts, joint conferences, for example. WTTC has a general assembly, they had a general assembly this week. We had a European representative. There were a number of important topics. We talked about the developments with the WTTC. Simplifications that needed to be made. I would recommend you look at the latest press releases from the WTTC on this topic. The Council of Ministers and the Bulgarian Presidency held conferences. I have a lot of respect for the Bulgarian Presidency. They have had successful events which they've organised with some very useful content, with real expertise. There was a meeting in Sofia, and I think that's a very useful basis. The European Tourism Organisation is soon going to be having a joint meeting in Vienna. I will represent the European Parliament there. There is also a website which has come online in recent days, looking at European capital I would recommend you have a look at this website. These are topics which are important with regards to our smart capitals target, and there is a prize related to this as well. I think Eduardo is going to talk about the ETC, or rather is going to report on that We also have the issue of the MFF budget. In February, Parliament agreed that we would have a budget line for our work. The discussions are ongoing. I'm not sure if we will be successful or not. I'm not sure the tourism lobby is really strong enough yet. We're doing everything that we can, but I think the lobby work isn't quite strong enough yet. It's not Mrs Wierszkowska's responsibility particularly, I think it's a responsibility for all. There was a letter to Mr Juncker and to Mr Ötinger in which we call for an additional budget line for tourism in the budget, to have that as a specific topic. Another important point in relation to the new visa codex, there is a framework plan. We will get the opinion from the TRAND Committee, but a lot of our initiatives aren't in the text unfortunately, some have been taken up in the proposal, so half-successful there. We welcome the visa initiative though, because this is something we will discuss again, I think. Okay, now we come on to today's topic. I would like to thank the Chair for allowing us to put together this event. We haven't really heard enough about Brexit and the consequences for tourism. A lot of people think that tourism won't be affected by Brexit. Unfortunately, that won't be the case. There'll be airline companies, tourism organisations, and they need to be able to plan one, two more years in advance. So we're looking at the period after the exit of the UK, the uncertainty. Sixty, seventy per cent of British people, I was talking about forty-seven million people, have considered Europe as their main holiday destination. Sixty-seven per cent of tourists in the UK come from Europe as well, so it's significant volumes we're talking about here. And we could see some really detrimental effects from Brexit. So first of all, I'd like to ask Mr Jenkins. I can give seven minutes to our speakers. Mr Jenkins, please go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it's an enormous honour for me to be addressing you today. My name's Tom Jenkins, I'm the Chief Executive of ETOA, the European Tourism Association. My members sell Europe as a destination throughout the world. A number of them are based in the UK or have representative offices in the UK, and we are obviously deeply concerned about Brexit. Brexit brought to mind a quote from Churchill, all things in Europe start with a quote in Churchill, and he described the situation in Russia as being a riddle wrapped in a mystery inside an enigma. He offered a solution to this riddle, which was you needed to look at Russian national self-interest. The difficulty, of course, with Brexit is it's very difficult to see any national self-interest in any respect, possible exception of wet fish. But the joke going around Brussels at the moment is actually quite pertinent, which is the one that says that the mafia makes you an offer you can't refuse, Brexit makes you an offer you can't understand. And that means that really what we're looking at when we're discussing Brexit on the next slide, is we're looking at a chimera, really. Now, a chimera really is two things. It's both a hybrid with the body of an extinct Mesopotamian lion, a snake for a tail, and a fire-breathing goat coming out of the side. It's not a domestic pet, I shouldn't add. And it also stands for a fantasy. And this is really what Brexit is at the moment, and all fantasies lack the intellectual consistency that you associate with fact. And it's the facts that we have to handle as businesses in tourism, and facts are completely lacking in the current situation. So if I'm asked, as I am in this presentation, to see what we can do, or what we have to say on hard and soft Brexit, in reality, we've got nothing, nothing substantial to address at the moment. It's like wrestling blomange. The biggest value add, though, in tourism, I'm just going to leave you with some thoughts. The biggest value add in tourism is sales. Sales is what make a ticket which is worth no more than a piece of paper worth fifteen to twenty pounds, or fifteen to twenty euros. It's what makes a hotel room whose marginal cost is nil, it makes it worth two to three hundred euros. And the biggest danger in this process is the breakdown in VAT arrangements between countries. Far too complex to raise in the current situation, but an inability for the VAT system to work within Europe will be catastrophic for the companies dealing in Europe in terms of what they do and how they move money around. Secondly, the most important component in tourism are the people who help deliver it. And it will potentially, if there's a hard Brexit, a really hard Brexit, have a catastrophic impact, both in terms of the people working in tourism, both in the UK and in the EU. In the UK, there are certain tourism delivery companies where seventy to eighty per cent of the online frontline people are non-UK EU nationals. So it's a vital component in UK tourism, having EU nationals working in it. Similarly, a lot of UK companies sending people to Europe, particularly non-UK nationals. All the American tour operators hire UK people to take these Americans around. Will Brexit affect business? Well, there is continued uncertainty, and this is not good for business. We are already seeing a significant decline in the variety and volume of applications in the UK, those companies are based here, and we're seeing a suppression of investment in the UK taking place as we speak. What about a change in the regulatory landscape coming from Brexit? This is much more complex and in some ways more interesting. I think the thing to realise is that there is a huge impulse towards harmonisation throughout the industry. Through almost all industries within the EU, they don't want to have separate regulations. No one wants two sets of rules. And so you can also anticipate, if there is starting to be a breakup in harmonisation, you can anticipate companies establishing EU offshoots, maybe in Brussels, maybe throughout Europe, because the four freedoms are hugely important for tourism businesses. They have to be able to deploy themselves and deploy people wherever demand leads, wherever demand sits. And above all, for those of us who see the EU as a dynamic force for reform, creating an ever better business environment, it's so obvious that there are many areas for reform where reform is vitally important for the European Union. The package travel directive, which is just to cite one area, which is going to be coming into force in two months' time, is already obsolete. It seeks to reform travel distribution, and travel distribution has changed unbelievably quickly and unbelievably dramatically over the last four to five years as this directive was being drafted. So we need immediately to start new reform. These discussions have to start now as to what the new package travel directive looks like. The question is, will the UK be affected as one of the largest markets in Europe? And how does the UK become involved within this regulatory market? Will it affect growth? Yes, you could just leave it at that, really. My members sell Europe, they sell it as a European destination. I suppose the biggest product, biggest single product we have is a Paris-London package. And what we sell when we sell London packages is we sell the service economy in London and Paris. Anything that adds demeans from the administrative, so adds to the administrative burdens in London and Paris and makes them less associated is going to demean and reduce European attractiveness and competitiveness. What is my main message for the negotiators? Well, like all trade associations, like all trade people, I think we fight for the status quo for as long as possible. We're products of the status quo, and that's what we want to see. As for the negotiators, two people huddled over a Ouija board thinking blank, I think what we need is a hope for some deus ex machina to arrive. What form will this deus ex machina be? It may come in the form of national self-interest, you never know. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tom. And it was perfect, seven minutes. And it was very interesting. It was very interesting. Thank you so much. The next speaker is Mark Tancer, CEO of the ABTA Travel Association. Mark, the floor is yours, and also about seven minutes, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much for the invitation to speak today. For those who may not know, ABTA is the UK's largest travel association. We have twelve hundred corporate members, combined turnover of about forty billion euros. We do business travel, but the majority of our members' business is leisure travel and sending UK citizens on holidays overseas, and particularly to the EU. We have a large public profile as well as trade profile, so when the referendum was announced, we were very careful not to tell people how they should vote, but we did look very carefully at what leaving the EU would mean for travel businesses as well as for tourists. And our view then, and is still is now, is that we like the status quo. We think that the arrangements that are currently in place have enabled tourism to grow very successfully, both for our members but also for destinations. And certainly amongst our members, there was no appetite for what we call a bonfire of the regulations. The regulations are in place that govern tourism, we think are good in building consumer confidence. So if I can have the first slide. So the Chairman mentioned the scale of what's at stake here. We have done analysis across the EU, but also particularly for the seven most important markets for EU tourism. And you can see the numbers here, fifty-three million trips, slightly more than you had, to the EU, thirty-seven billion euros in GVA, eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand jobs, four-hundred-and-forty thousand businesses supported by UK travellers. And in those, what we call Sunshine Seven Economies, twenty-eight billion euros of GVA. So a very significant economic activity, not just for the UK, but obviously for the destination countries where UK travellers go. If I can have the next slide, please, next slide. So what are the foundations of that success that we would like to maintain through the negotiations? First, you won't be surprised to hear is aviation as an island. We get most of the people into the EU by aeroplane, and we've benefited enormously from the EU Open Skies Agreement. This has not only brought holidays within the reach of people who wouldn't previously been able to afford them, but it's opened up destinations as well which wouldn't have previously been viable. We would like to preserve that going forward in the interests of both sides, EU and the UK. The industry, the tourism industry, does move key workers around in support of the businesses and individual tourists with tour reps, ski chalet workers, and so forth. That's an important component of the business model. Clearly, you know, being able to preserve that is going to bring in issues about the single market and the whole movement of workers, which we know was so important in the referendum in the first place, but we have to put it up there as being very important to the tourism industry. And on a similar basis, free flow through the borders. We use a lot of the same infrastructure as freight, and getting freight and people through the borders without long delays is going to be a challenge if we are not in a customs union, and it is something that has to be borne in mind as we go through the negotiations, just the impact on the tourism industry if we get long delays at borders. And lastly, we think the success of the industry has been built on maintaining consumer confidence. Some of that is through regulations such as the package travel directive, but also there are some reciprocal arrangements such as the EHIC card, the European Health Insurance Card, which gives reciprocal cover for EU nationals. That's been very beneficial, and we think that would be good to preserve. The abolition of mobile roaming charges, ditto. So those are the issues that we think are very important for maintaining tourism. What we want to, what do we want to have going forward? Well, we'd like to preserve those. What we really want to avoid is a hard exit. If we had a hard Brexit with no agreement at all on aviation, that is pretty much unthinkable, but it would be very catastrophic. But also, we want to avoid, you know, the cliche is a cliff edge, where we have, you know, uncertainty that takes us right up either until March next year or December twenty-twenty, where people don't know, businesses nor tourists, what the situation is going to be. Our strategy at ABTA in pushing our agenda on this has been to work, to do the analysis, to work with the government in Westminster in the United Kingdom, to make them realise the importance of this economically and also socially for their constituents, and also to work bilaterally with the countries most affected as destinations. I have to say, there has been almost a hundred per cent agreement that this is a good thing economically, and that it would be good to preserve. But of course, economics and business sense don't always run side by side with political discourse, where I think we have been frustrated by the fact there's been more rhetoric than detail about what these arrangements could look like in the future. I think it's positive that our Prime Minister has started to show that some of her very firm red lines are perhaps not quite as strong. So when she was talking a while ago about our needing to maintain in her ideal associate membership for YALSA, the Aviation Space Agency, which we would need if we were to be able to carrying on flying, which of course would require ongoing contributions and jurisdiction of a European Court, it shows that there is a recognition that we cannot simply cut ourselves off from this. So I guess my, I've got two pleas, I suppose, at the governmental level as we go into this crucial next phase. One is that the United Kingdom really comes clean, you know, say what, you know, we can't have everything, we can't have, you know, to use the analogy, have our cake and eat it, we can't have complete access without the rules. So where on that spectrum do we want to be? And to be open, not just with the EU partners with whom we're negotiating, but with the British public as well, so that we can actually start to make progress on the detail. And I suppose, you know, on the wish from the UK or from my side to the EU is that this is not a zero-sum game negotiation where it's win/lose either way. If you look at those numbers, both sides have gained enormously from tourism between the UK and the EU, and I hope that we can preserve that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark. And the next speaker is Gustavo Martinier from Spain, from Valencia, on behalf of the Nextur. I think here in this room, all of us, we know very well the Nextur, and that's why we invited you to have your opinion. Please, it's your, Gustavo.
Muchas gracias. Spanish? So, no sé si seré...
I'm not sure if I can be quite as precise as the previous speakers in the period of seven minutes, but we'll give it a go. I want to try and add to this debate from the regional perspective. I'm speaking from the autonomous region of Valencia in Spain. We are a member of a variety of different networks such as NEXTUR, so we're going to give you the regional perspective here. When it comes to Brexit, it's a bit difficult to evaluate what might happen, but what we would like to know first and foremost, from the regional perspective, that's related to the conclusions we've got from the first phase of the negotiations. So in principle, a lot of the regions have a positive evaluation of the preliminary agreement. There's a difficult task ahead to deal with certain legal aspects such as the rights of citizens, coordination of social security systems, and the recognition of qualifications, issues that have already been raised. And as the report always states, nothing is agreed until everything is agreed. From the regional point of view, and in the Committee of the Regions as well, a lot of national delegations have drawn up position papers and have stated what concerns them the most with these exit negotiations. There have been a number of debates in the Committee of the Regions, certain documents have been published. The latest development is a regional intergroup which has been set up on Brexit. It has met twice already, around twenty regions are participating in that group. The objective is to facilitate dialogue. As we all know, Brexit will have a more or less negative impact, but certainly things will be different. So what we're trying to do in the group is to try and work and anticipate this impact so it can be negated somewhat at a regional level, and we can help regions adapt to these There are also interregional networks within the Committee of the Regions that are working at a European level, connecting regional and local bodies that are also working on the impact of Brexit. There is a network dedicated to innovation and research, there is also a conference of maritime and outermost regions as well, and all of these bodies are working to look at the possible impacts. Sorry, I've somewhat forgotten my presentation here. If we can move on to slide number four. In the case of these networks, so NEXTUR, which I would like to mention in particular, this is a network which works for competitive and sustainable tourism, thirty-three associated entities. This covers regional authorities. It also takes in the academic and research sectors. This network has been around for around ten years. This grew out of a need for regions to cooperate and to share good practices. We have a number of members of NEXTUR. There are a number in the UK, there's one in Scotland who we have here with us today. From the point of view of the Spanish regions, we are coordinating through the Spanish delegation in the Committee of the Regions. The Spanish regions have also drawn up a common position paper looking at what the impact could be from Brexit. And the service sector, for example, the most significant repercussions will be through a loss of rights, and that's something that was already looked at in the first phase of the agreement, how this might affect British and European companies working on both sides of the channel, the issue of professional qualifications, public procurement, social security, digital services, roaming, for example, financial services, et cetera. Spanish regions are also concerned about trade. There could be a possible downturn in the British economy or depreciation of the pound, so these are particularly areas of concern. The housing market might be affected, this has a knock-on effect for Spain. So we don't know exactly how things are going to work out, is it going to be a hard Brexit, a soft Brexit? What we do know is this is already having an effect in terms of housing, in sales. If we look at Valencia, for example, there are certainly effects which are being felt. This is important because a lot of houses are purchased by British citizens as second homes. So they're bought as a... So they're bought as second homes, but also rented out as holiday homes during certain periods of the year as well. There's a lot of expats, particularly in the region of Valencia, a lot of tourists. So it certainly would affect our economy in our region. Now, this next slide looks specifically at tourism. I think I might just go over the seven minutes, apologies. The UK is our biggest market of tourists coming to Spain. It's certainly a negative outlook if we end up seeing Brits choosing other destinations. If there is new administrative controls put in place, for example, this would also have a negative impact on tourism. We don't want to see those additional obstacles. What we're particularly concerned about is that there might be a change in dynamic for low-cost tour operators, tour guides and all of the related sectors that add value. So we're not just talking about a very specific impact. It could be more widespread as well. With regards to Valencia on the next slide, again, the UK is the number one market for us for tourism. Here we have an example, for example, what's happening in the housing market. And we have a slowdown in demand from the Brits. We felt that since October. So if we look at the end of 2016, it's really quite an alarming trend, so almost a 31% downturn. There's also the issue of health for those who are resident. That's a strategic issue. And also a possible reduction in the number of flights, how this might affect the airport of Alicante, for example, the number of passengers that are travelling through. So if we compare recent years, year on year, we can see that there has been a downturn. And if we look at the next slide, we have the case of Andalucía. The Andalusian Regional Government believes that there'll be about a 1% negative impact in immediate terms. The effects of Brexit will probably be felt over a decade. Of course, when it comes to Andalucía, we also have to mention the issue of Gibraltar. That is a special issue within the Brexit negotiations. On the next slide, and we have a contribution from the region of Flanders. They also have a significant number of tourists that come from the UK and they are already seeing a 1.4% decline in British tourists since 2016. And to conclude, we have a series of recommendations that I'd like to go through with you. The, first of all, is not to think about a hard or soft Brexit, but think about a citizen-friendly Brexit. Those are the people who will feel the effects of these negotiations. So Brexit should be thought first and foremost how it impacts our citizens. And we think it's also important that the Committee of the Regions and regional governments are included in the negotiations through their governments. A lot of them, negotiations deal with exclusive competences of the regions and these regions aren't fully involved. And there also needs to be specific preventative measures to try and mitigate the economic consequences. I think when we look at the next budget and programming period, the possibility of cuts, I think we need to be thinking about how we will deal with possible negative effects at a regional level. We also have the issue of health insurance, mutual recognition of social security payments. And finally, thinking about possible obstacles, whether it's tariff, non-tariff barriers, administrative problems, bureaucracy, anything that makes trade or commercial relations more difficult. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Muchas gracias. Now we will travel from Valencia to Scotland. And I will give the floor to Mr Malcolm Ruffhead, the CEO of Visit Scotland. The floor is yours.
My name is Malcolm Ruffhead. I'm the chief executive of Visit Scotland and we are the national tourism body for Scotland. In our remit, we have events, sporting, cultural and business, marketing, information provision and quality. And tourism as an industry is a key component of the Scottish economy as demonstrated by its status as one of Scotland's growth sectors. In terms of value and jobs, tourism has cemented the sector's status as a key contributor to economic growth. Between 2008 and 2014, tourism gross value add grew in Scotland by 42%, while tourism employment increased in 2015 by 11% to reach 217,000 people, which equates to 9% of the total employment. And that is the highest level of employment in tourism since the Business Register and Employment Survey began. In 2016, Scotland attracted approximately 14.3 million overnight visitors. That generated 4.8 billion pounds in visitor expenditure. And added to that were a further 142 million day trips, which equated to a spend of 4.9 billion pounds. Take all that together and with the wider impact on the Scottish supply chain, the value of the industry to the Scottish economy is around 11 billion pounds. So we are more reliant on tourism, tourism growth and the health of tourism in Scotland than in other areas of the UK. And clearly, any negative impacts from Brexit on tourism would have a significantly damaging effect on the visitor economy in Scotland. The EU and the visitors from the European Union are incredibly important to us. 54% of all international visits to Scotland come from EU residents and that's based on a three-year annual average between 2014 and 16 of European visitors to Scotland and all other international inbound visitors. So that equates to somewhere in the region of about 1.4 million trips per annum, which come from European residents spending almost 700 million pounds. More than half of the visitors to Scotland come from France, Germany and the Netherlands and they make several repeated visits to the country. Most trips are by those aged 25 to 44 and we're seeing strong growth recently in the last decade in the 45 to 54 demographic. So therefore, European visitors have an enormous impact on the health and future growth potential of the visitor economy in Scotland. And as an organisation, Visit Scotland seeks to share best practice with colleagues across Europe in a number of areas such as social tourism, accessible tourism, events, quality and data-driven, evidence-based marketing best practice. And in terms of collaborating and partnership, they're part of our organisational DNA and that certainly will not change going forward. In the last four years, the strategic partnerships that we have forged with our partners in Europe have been extremely helpful to us, have been productive. And again, it is something that we will protect as we go forward, come what may. The Brexit decision itself raises important questions for the future of the economy and for hospitality and tourism in particular. And you've heard many, many examples from the three previous speakers, so I'm not going to repeat what they have said. But I will say that the British Hospitality Industry Members' Survey showed that 75% of businesses said that they would see their costs rising as a result of the referendum. And businesses anticipate that this is due to the value of sterling and also the potential rise in cost of labour if the status of EU nationals living and working in the UK changes. As prospects for other sectors are also increasingly uncertain, the hospitality and tourism industry has never been more important to the ongoing success of the Scottish economy and society. And with regard to exchange rates, we saw after the Brexit vote in 2016, an initial devaluation of sterling, which certainly stimulated demand. But you cannot build long-term strategy on short-term currency gains. There's far too much at stake in economic terms. So in terms of Scotland's reputation after the Brexit vote, there's been no real evidence of any negative impact on Scotland's desirability as a destination for EU visitors. And that is reflective of a lot of the work that has gone in within Europe to reassure the visitors of the welcome that they will receive when they visit Scotland. And we have a very strong visitor proposition, but again, we cannot be complacent and rely on that alone. And it is vital that it remains easy for visitors from Europe to get to Scotland and any additional barriers to access, whether cost or visa-related, must be avoided. That brings us to the free movement of labour from the EU and that has been touched on. But that is certainly the single biggest concern for the Scottish hospitality and tourism industry and there's already an insufficient supply of labour to meet the growth protection, projections for hospitality and tourism in Scotland. So ensuring a workforce supply which facilitates our growth potential is absolutely paramount. The British Hospitality Association in Scotland states that there are over 56,000 people employed in the hotel sector alone from Europe, nearly 124,000 in the wider restaurant sector and nearly 65,000 in the catering sector more widely. Almost 20% of the hospitality and tourism workforce in Scotland, therefore, is comprised of European workers and other migrant labour. And that's in the context of over 219,000 EU nationals who live in Scotland, which is 4.1% of our population. Even nearer to home, within my own organisation, we employ people from 23 different countries and each one of them brings their own particular skill set to the benefit of Scottish tourism. So it is absolutely clear that the potential impact of losing EU workers is huge and a variety of industry stakeholders, as we've heard today, are lobbying government to ensure that the growth requirements of the hospitality and tourism industry are represented when it comes to negotiations on the departure of the UK from the EU. So in summary, whatever the impact of Brexit, Visit Scotland will continue to work in partnership to communicate Scotland's strengths to visitors from the EU. I think over time, we have successfully demonstrated our ability to be fleet of foot in responding productively to challenging global events. I think of things like volcanic ash clouds or recession. And we will continue in the meantime to engage proactively with our partners and neighbours across the European Union. In the tourism context, all destinations face similar challenges, from constantly evolving consumer needs to rapidly changing advances in digital technology to the crucial overarching need to ensure we not only remain competitive, but sustainable and inclusive. We have much in Scotland to offer our partners in Europe in meeting those challenges and we remain a willing partner in the exchange of best practice so that we all across Europe can address the future needs of our industry. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr Ruffhead. And I hope that we can work together after the Brexit. Visit Scotland is one of the most active players in European tourism. So I think we need you after the Brexit. I hope we can work together. The next speaker, Mr Nigel Morgan, who is head of the Business Department of the School of Management, Swansea University. I would like to give the floor to you.
Thank you, and I'm delighted to be invited to speak here today. I think perhaps one of the advantages of being last is you probably see that there are some similarities in what I'm going to talk about compared to the other four speakers. I'd like to move to the next slide, please. And to start by underlining what my fellow panelists have said is that the European visitor economy is an engine of entrepreneurship, of economic and social inclusion and sustainable growth. The European visitor economy is hugely interconnected. I perhaps won't go through the detail of the statistics because we have heard quite a lot already in terms of how interdependent the economies are. Perhaps to say a couple of key things. One is that eight out of 10 of the UK's top markets are European and account for 50% of spend. So moving to the next slide, when we look at where UK residents are travelling, we've also heard in detail already of the total numbers. But we're already at a stage, I think, where countries like Spain, Greece and Cyprus are expressing anxiety about the reduced numbers of UK tourists visiting in the long term. Obviously, one of the main reasons for this level of interdependence is the single market. If we move to the next slide. To underline some of my fellow panelists and what they've already said, the visitor economy is hugely significant to the UK economy. It's worth more to the UK economy than the more, I guess you might say, the more active agricultural and automotive industries in terms of political lobbying. And one of the challenges that we have, particularly, I think, maybe in a Welsh context, but in a wider UK context, is to underline how hugely important the tourism and the wider visitor economy is to the UK economy. So moving to the next slide. The UK tourism industry is performing well at the moment. I think to reiterate what Malcolm has said, it's essential that we don't build a future around the short-term fact that we are benefiting from exchange rate depreciation at the moment. It's absolutely essential that the travel industry prospers post-Brexit from a UK perspective and that business and leisure travellers continue to travel freely and to enjoy the current benefits. Perhaps to move to the next slide is my favourite slide, I think, in the presentation. I very much see Brexit as an iceberg. We can see some of the implications. I actually think that most of the consequences of Brexit are unforeseen and perhaps at the moment invisible to a number of key stakeholders. To the next slide. I guess we can outline some of the key challenges. They are very much around maintaining, I think, the level of the status quo. How do we actually deal with potential changes in health, reciprocal arrangements between member states? How are we going to tackle issues around potential APD? How will that potentially defer or rather deter EU and UK visitors? To move to the next slide. In terms of brand challenges, I'm coming out this, I guess, of all the panel members, I'm the academic on the panel, so I'm not actually representing an industry organisation as such. Looking at what the research is saying, it's a very confused picture at the moment. Some stakeholders, you can see, believe that Brexit is already having a negative impact on the UK's reputation. on the UK's reputation. This is based on surveys of stakeholders at the London World Travel Market. But if we move to the next slide, you can see that amongst potential visitors, that's not necessarily the case. And I think it depends who you're asking and where the research is based. If we're asking non-EU residents, it seems that the UK is remaining relatively attractive, but we don't know to what extent that's influenced at the moment by the exchange rate. Move to my next slide, please, thank you. I think there are a number of areas that we particularly need to focus on. It's already the case that UK tourists are paying more for their holidays in Europe. How are we going to deal with things like safeguarding transport links? How are we going to deal with the aviation sector? I cannot underline more strongly that it would be catastrophic if no agreement is reached in the aviation sector, as there are no World Trade Organisation rules to default to. How are we going to deal with consumer rights? It's important that we preserve these in terms of dealing with, I like the phrase, citizen-friendly Brexit, and how are we going to remain competitive as a wider European destination when you consider that a number of packages are across the EU? Moving to the next slide. I think we need to really underline the challenge around mobility and the challenge around the people in the hospitality and the tourism industry. In terms of the number of EU nationals working in the tourism and hospitality sectors, it's difficult to reach a definitive figure. One estimate puts it at the fact that the numbers of EU nationals has increased by almost 25% between 2011 and 2016. That is obviously going to pose considerable problems if we cannot guarantee those individuals in terms of the status quo of their employment arrangements. Moving to the next slide. The other key challenge, I think, obviously concerns funding. At the moment, from a Welsh perspective, Wales is in receipt of considerable amount of European Union funds. How are we going to deal with the marketing challenges? How are we going to deal with the product development challenges that have previously been funded by European Union in the future? We're in a situation where local government tourism budgets are already fragmented and decreasing, so it's a hugely challenging picture. Moving to the next slide. Wales, as I think, is an interesting lens on the Brexit debate. Its position at the moment as an international destination has recently improved considerably, but if we are to grow further as a destination, we have to look to that growth coming from the international markets, which currently are responsible for 10% of visitors, but 20% of our spend. So that is a huge challenge for us in the context of Brexit. To move to the next slide. So finally, I think in terms of key takeaways, what we need from the Brexit negotiations, we certainly need not a hard Brexit, we need a Brexit which delivers a prosperous European-wide travel and tourism sector, and it ensures that business and leisure travellers continue to travel freely and to enjoy the current benefits. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr Morgan. And now we have, we don't have too much time, but of course, I would like to open the discussion and ask the colleagues, the MEPs who would like to speak. First of all, Isabel de Monta.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and my thanks to the speakers for these very interesting presentations. And thank you for having referred to our initiatives in tourism. Could I come to the heart of the matter? Because this is a committee which deals with transport and tourism, precisely because of the close link between transport and tourism. Now, aviation was referred to. We know that in 2050, we have double the number of passengers, so it is essential to bear in mind that you have to be able to reach places, and prices must be such as to favour tourism. We know that companies are thinking about moving their headquarters, and I think that one thing which will have a direct impact on tourism is that one large low-cost company has already announced that there will be an increase in their rates. Do you have any order of magnitude? Are there any studies which have been carried out about that? That's one question. Now, we know that low-cost airlines are important for getting to the outermost regions. Now, to go on to London, let's talk about positive things as well. It's a very important tourism resort. I think we're talking about something like 20 million visitors. But of course, a reduction in purchasing power could in actual fact favour tourism towards the UK. Now, it's true that the European brand is a very important one, but at the same time, the UK might suddenly see that tourists going to the UK would go up. Now, in terms of traffic and circulation movement, obviously, I agree completely, we can't go back to the old system with visas and passports and queues at airports. So we need to have some sort of economic assessment of what all of that would entail. And then we have tourism. Now, we were talking about insurance cover, but there's more to it than that. There's health insurance, which is something which is very important for tourists. They choose their destination on the basis of that as well, and we have to add that to the practical arrangements referred to in the directive on insurance cover. Could I just wind up with the following point? I know that it is a difficult issue for some Gibraltar. Now, this is a taboo subject in this committee and elsewhere. Well, let's not talk about Gibraltar, let's talk about the Linea de la Concepcion. Unfortunately, it's not mentioned in any of the resolutions. We've referred to Ireland, but we haven't referred to Gibraltar. And I think that this is wrong, because unfortunately today, there are certain provisions which are stuck in council on this issue, the issue of Gibraltar, and I think that this simply is not acceptable. It's a limit for the European skies and for passengers, but also in terms of workers' rights, because there are thousands of workers who are on that line, who live there, and they have had to move to Gibraltar for their work, and in the future, they might not be sufficiently protected. So I think that we should remember this. We, as members of parliament, must also take these problems on board and must not hide away or shy away from these difficulties, because I think European citizens will expect that we solve these problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel. The next one, Mr Taylor.
Well, thanks very much, and thank you to the speakers for their presentations. I've just got really one basic question, perhaps best addressed to Mark Tanser from the ABTA. And you spoke very briefly, but very darkly, about the effect of aviation disruption and the Open Skies Agreement. You sort of said, that way lays madness, but I wonder if you could just expand a little bit on where you see the negotiations, how you see the possibilities that British tourists and indeed the EU tourists into Britain will be possibly affected by any disruption to the Open Skies Agreement?
Well, thank you for the question. Excuse me, sir. I would like to collect all the questions and opinions, and after that, finally, I will give you the floor. The next one is Mr Piper, Marcus Piper.
Thank you very much. I can be brief. Obviously, we're living in paradise here, looking at what's coming down the line: package deals, open skies, trust by consumers, ticketing, security, roaming, this issue of visa or no visa, tourism budgets, consumer right protection. It's crazy. It's fantastic in the European Union. There's obviously the workers working in the catering industry. Now, let me just, to Mr Tanser, say that in the Brexit debate, you said you behaved in a neutral fashion. I don't understand that at all. Why didn't you go on the offensive for Remain? You set out all the advantages, and then you said that you took a neutral stance. So I think there's a certain degree of culpability for having now to try and save the situation. Now, two consequences. We've got the budget line for tourism. We've got external borders to protect. We've got development. We've got erasmus to promote. We've got infrastructure, research. We've got all of these new challenges, and we want a budget line for tourism. No, sorry. Leave it in cohesion. It's got a strong position there, but a new line for tourism, I rather fear, given the debate on the future and the priorities of the European Union, is simply not going to be there. Second point, I would ask all the stakeholders who've spoken today to exercise some leverage on the government to try and bring it as close to the single market as possible in the UK. And also, when we're thinking about our own negotiating stance, that's very important. That's all for me.
Next one is Julia Evans.
Thank you very much. And can I thank all the speakers for the very interesting, if also depressing, presentations? Not unexpectedly, of course, because we know a lot of the problems that face us if we leave the EU. I was particularly interested to hear about the developments in the Committee of the Regions and this regional intergroup, which was going to be working with regions to help them adapt. And I think that that's something I'd like to hear more about, if not today, but perhaps at some point. But also, I represent Wales, and one of the things that we are very proud of in Wales is that people have a very warm welcome when they come there. And we heard that in Scotland, there doesn't seem to have been any impact on tourism in the sense that people are put off visiting, and I wondered if that was the case also in the rest of the UK. We heard too that, was it London or was it the UK as a whole, that there actually had been an increase in the past year in the number of visitors. I wonder if that is more related to the possibility of people visiting before Brexit happened, rather than an indication of success in the future. But I think, as with lots of Brexit negotiations, there are a lot of questions that we can't answer at this stage, but I think it's very positive that we've had this session. Thank you.
Next one is Mr Werner Kuhn.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I'd like to thank the speakers too. You've painted a pretty clear picture of the current state of affairs, tourism on the continent, and tourism in particular in the British Isles. After enlargement of the EU to the East and the accession of Poland, Hungary, Slovakia, the Baltic States, Romania, Bulgaria, Britain, allowed freedom of movement for its own economic purposes quite quickly. Other countries didn't do that because they had problems in their own labour market, and Germany for seven years didn't allow freedom of movement after that first round of enlargement. They put it off. Now, many workers headed to the UK and have been able to find jobs in the service sector in particular in the UK, 200,000 in Scotland and Wales. Now, I'm wondering how, when it comes to that particular area, we will have any degree of guarantees in the future? Got the rights of European Union citizens living in the UK and conversely, Britons living in the EU to think about, will it continue to work in the future? Then there's visa Maybe the UK never felt quite so plugged into Europe as other countries, but there was the freedom of movement. And certainly, when it comes to tourism, that's very important economically, in particular for those rather economically backward areas. Now, Scotland, Cornwall, Wales, I'm more worried about them than I am of Greater London. For example, if you read the papers in Germany, you'd almost imagine, now that we've got the third child born to the throne of the royal family, was living in Germany, but we've got the structural funds, and we know that there is the support by tourism for the economically less advanced areas, and we'd have to think about how that could be compensated in the future. Let's not forget that UKIP and other initiators of Brexit drove around with these great posters saying £350 million, of course, you'd never call them euros, would you? Pounds are sent to Europe every week. We'd rather use them in the NHS, do the other bit of arithmetic there, and you wonder how things will work in the future. We are following the political developments of the UK very closely, wondering how it's going to play out. Maybe there is going to be some kind of interim arrangement, or maybe a new referendum. We'll have to see.
Thank you so much. We don't have more MEP's comment. That's why I can give you the floor. Who would like to answer, please, one by one? Tom, would you like to?
I think I would just reiterate that these topics, most of the questions were directed to my colleague, Mark Tanser, but I would just like to say on behalf of the European industry, particularly NET, which is the network of European private sector associations, this is something that we collectively care about and have issued a position paper and are very, very concerned about its impact on the whole of Europe, not just the UK.
Just to pick up two of the questions which I think were heading my way. One was on aviation and being more explicit about the risks there. I am confident that we will continue to have flights between the UK and the EU, but in order for that to happen, we have to be part of EASA, the Space Agency. We could conceivably have bilateral aviation agreements with different countries, but we'd still need to be part of that agency. The UK has said there is no way that we are going to set up our own version of that. They're not even doing it as a contingency plan, because if they did, people might think it was possible. But that has to be negotiated. So we're at that point of the negotiation that until that is in place, technically, we won't be able to fly. So I think it is very important that these issues are addressed as a matter of urgency. On the point about our neutrality, if I can just say that we were out when we did our analysis about how detrimental this would be for tourism, doing a lot of media work, making it very clear to people that in that part of their lives, that is tourism, where they travel, we saw more downside than upside. And you can say, well, that's very wishy-washy. But the reality is that if you go and tell people how to vote, But the reality is that if you go and tell people how to vote, you generate an equal and opposite reaction to what you're trying to say. If you can make the arguments about how in that particular part of their life they'll be impacted, then they can make that equation on their own. And the other fact, you know, when you do end up, if we ever have other referendums, you know, for a business organisation, for businesses, on an issue that is so emotional and so finely balanced, if you come out very strongly on one side, and this is the reality, you will upset half of your customers. And that's why I think, you know, at the time of the referendum, businesses and business trade associations were quite equivocal about this. But we are making the points from a commercial point of view of what the potential downside is.
I wanted to refer to two specific questions from Mrs de Monte on Gibraltar. Now, it's not a taboo topic. It has a special status because it is a special situation. I mentioned the workers, there's 13,250. They are cross-border workers. Now, I don't know if this comes under the remit of this committee or maybe it's employment. It's certainly not a taboo subject though, as far as I understand. All the information surrounding this negotiation is public. Having said this, that's what I understand anyway with regards to Gibraltar in the context of Brexit. And then on the other question as to the functioning of the Interregional Group on Brexit in the Committee of the Regions, it's only been up and running for the last couple of weeks. There are three main points which we are focusing our work on. So information exchange on possible consequences of Brexit. Secondly, which is also very important, is identifying which regions are most affected or could be most affected by the consequences of Brexit and working with those regions to try and mitigate those negative effects. Thirdly, and this is looking to the future already, with the regions with which we are already cooperating, looking at developing ideas and how we can continue that cooperation in the future. The intergroup is currently provided by a French region. There are two vice chairs, one from the Basque Country and the other from Ireland. The idea is that we'll meet six, seven times per year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't think there's a lot more to add, except as we and the industry begin to look at the implications, I think it's absolutely important that we join up all the dots and we look for the unknowns that clearly we don't know about at the moment, and we follow that through so that there are no unforeseen consequences at the end of the day. I think one or two good examples is about, and someone mentioned insurance, health insurance, it could be car insurance, that there will be implications all the way through the supply chain, and we need to make sure that we identify those and deal with those in a very pragmatic manner. Thank you.
Thank you. So to pick up on some of the questions, I think in terms of, to my knowledge, there are, there are no major studies of the impact around the budget airlines. I think that probably underlines the fact that we need a lot more intelligence and a lot more research in general around this area. There is a real lack of not just clarity from government, but there is a real lack of understanding, I think, from a research base around the implications of Brexit and tourism in a wider sense. To pick up on the issue around the impact of the welcome, I think it's a very difficult question to answer because of the fact that we simply don't have that research. A lot of this information is anecdotal, and it's being picked up at things like trade fairs. So I think at the moment, there seems to be not an impact on the welcome from the UK and that the UK is still very much seen as being a welcoming, positive place for European nationals to holiday, but we probably need more information on that. I think picking up on the point about London, it's a really interesting question. Certainly from a Welsh perspective, and I guess Malcolm would say this from a Scottish perspective as well, it's a huge challenge for the regions and other countries of the UK to attract tourists in general out of London, and London has constantly been growing its market share. So I don't necessarily think that's a new thing. It seems to have been something that's been happening for quite some time. The extent to which that will continue, I really have no idea. But so I think the message I would just say really is that we need clarity around the operational questions and all of the things that my colleagues have raised, but actually, we need some more information, we need some more concrete research around what are the key issues and implications.
Thank you, Nigel. And finally, I would like to ask my colleagues and also Jeremino to make some kind of conclusion. And because I don't like those committee meetings when we have long discussions without any kinds of follow-up. So I would like to have one, some kind of proposal, to collect all those speeches and all those comments, what the MEPs also did, and it would be nice to send it to all the decision-makers, because it was only the Transportation Tourism Committee, Tourism Task Force meeting, but it would be useful to have a visibility of these opinions. So I would like to send it to all the MEPs here in the House and also to the government, to the British government and also to the officials here in Brussels, if it's possible to do it the next days, next weeks, because I think we had several very, very important comments and opinions. So colleagues, thank you very much. Thank you for coming. I hope that it was useful for all of us. And finally, I have to close the committee meeting.